Live from Batesburg Leesville, thank you Michael Neese. Welcome everyone to the town of Batesburg Leesville, special council meeting November the 24th, almost time to put on your fat pants to beautiful Town Hall complex. I will call this meeting to order and do I have a pastor in the audience?
My husband.
Stand on up young man and lead us in an invocation if you would.
Absolutely, let's pray. Father God, we just thank you for this momentous date and occasion where we celebrate our town and those who love it. Lord, we just thank you for our leaders and I pray blessings upon those who are just starting their terms and those who are finishing up, we just, we just thank you for these folks. We thank you for their dedication and their support of our town and its people. We only wish that we can continue to do the same and even be better and grow and do better things than we ever have before. That's our expectation and that's what we know that with you at the helm, Lord, that that's what will happen, Lord. We just thank you and we praise you in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen, thank you so much. Stand if you are able for the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Turner.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Go move.
Mr. Hall.
Second.
And second by Mr. Bucknight. Everyone would turn on your microphones, thank you. District one for approval of the agenda.
Yes.
District two.
Yes.
Three.
District three votes yes.
Four.
Four, yes.
Five.
Yes.
Six.
Yes.
Seven.
Yes.
Eight.
Yes.
Mayor votes yes, motion carries. Do we have any public comments this evening? Seeing that we have none, we have three items of business this evening. We have acceptance of the results from the November 18th, 2025 runoff election, recognition of outgoing mayor and a swearing in of a mayor from November 18th runoff election. So do I have any motions for the acceptance of the results from the November 18th, 2025 runoff election?
Slow move.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
Four, yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes, motion carries. And this brings up the recognition of the outgoing mayor. I guess that's me.
Well, just to say a few words and then we'll present the plaque, Cricket has the plaque. Lanthar has served as the mayor for two terms, eight years, so he joined us in November of 2017, that seems like a long time ago and a pandemic ago, and eight years and two extra weeks just here at the end. So without further ado, I'll get the plaque and we'll present that. The Lanthar, if you want to take a picture, please step forward, that'll be Laura.
All right, just being, I'm just messing. And so traditionally we've done a gavel for the mayor. Lanthar is the former, he had three already that had gavels, so we took a picture a couple weeks ago. So for staff, for myself, and I think for Teddy Luck, the former town manager, thank you for your service to the community, thank you for your tireless efforts to make the Leesville better place, and we appreciate your service.
Oh, I didn't stand up.
Switch chairs, man, give the switch chairs.
Yeah, in a minute.
And you can say a few words if you'd like. You know, I think we're set up pretty good and thank you for the memories, I'll just leave it at that. Moving on to the swearing of the mayor from the November 18th election, Municipal Judge Michael Emmer, if you would, sir, already pre-robed and everything, come up and, and Mr. Bucknight.
Oh, you can't hog the candy, man. There's no candy, man. Man, I'm not happy about that.
All right, Mr. Bucknight, you ready? My hand is fine, you all right? Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I am legally qualified.
I do solemnly swear that I am legally qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state?
According to the Constitution of this state?
To exercise the duties of the office to which I have been elected.
To exercise the duties of the office to which I've been elected.
And that I will, to the best of my ability?
And that I will, to the best of my ability?
Discharge the duties thereof?
Discharge the duties thereof.
And to preserve, protect, and defend?
And to preserve, protect, and defend?
The Constitution of this state and of the United States.
The Constitution of this state and the United States.
As mayor of the town of Batesburg Leesville?
As mayor of the town of Batesburg Leesville?
I will equally, fairly, and impartially?
I will equally, fairly, and impartially?
To the best of my ability and skill?
To the best of my ability and skill?
Exercise the trust reposed in me?
Exercise the trust reposed in me?
And I will use my best endeavors?
And I will use my best endeavors?
To preserve the peace?
To preserve the peace?
And carry into effect?
And carry into effect?
According to the law, the purpose for which I have been elected?
According to the law, the purpose for which I have been elected.
So help me God?
So help me God.
Congratulations.
It's not you.
Boy, they get to sit beside you long.
Before I take the duties and adjourn this meeting, I want to thank everybody that's here and everybody in this town for all the support. This is a town victory, a town job, we all have to work together, and I know we will and I appreciate everything that everybody's done. All right, at this time we'll adjourn the meeting for and reconvene in our work session. Need vote? We have a motion to adjourn?
Remove seconds.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, district one, yes. District three?
District three votes yes.
District four?
Four, yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes, meeting's adjourned. Meeting's adjourned. We're going to call this work session a quarter. I get approval of the agenda. The, we're, tonight, we're talking about, in our work session, we're going to be talking about the newly elected council orientation presentation by Mass Field Services Representative Rob Wolf. And we're going to have a presentation and discussion of AMI GRP engagement. So, we want approval, we really don't vote in a work session, so we'll just move right into it.
All right. Good evening, everybody, and thank you all for spending some time with me this evening. My name is Rob Wolf. I'm the Field Services Manager for the Upstate Region with the Municipal Association of South Carolina. Been on the job for about six weeks now, I guess, so still getting out in the territory and meeting everybody. Prior to this, I was the city manager in Charole, South Carolina, and I did work in local government for about eight or nine years before coming over to the association side. And first, I'd just like to say congratulations for those of you who are recently elected, or for those of you who are returning to council. It's certainly a big deal to get the trust of the people and take a position on council, and I certainly appreciate anyone who is willing to put themselves out there and serve on a council, because I'll be the first to say it's a very thankless job, and you guys have to make the hard decisions, and that's, you know, what you were elected to do, what you put yourself out there for. So, again, I thank you for your service to your community. And tonight, we're just going to go over newly elected official orientation, just kind of a basic introduction for what happens now that you're transitioning out of campaign mode and moving into elected official mode. As I'm going through, if you have any questions at any point, feel free to ask if there's anything you'd like to discuss later on or afterwards. I'll be more than happy to do that as well. All told, this should take about an hour or so, so I'll try to be mindful of everyone's time. If y'all want me to speed it up, just let me know, but I'm here for you guys, so. All right. So, as I mentioned, I am the Field Services Manager for the Upstate. I cover the light blue territory there, which includes Lexington County. And we're just going to do some quick overviews tonight of the Municipal Association of South Carolina and the services we offer, leadership in your city, our civility initiative, your form of government, and how it relates to your role as a council member, the basics of effective meetings, the basics of risk management, the basics of the Freedom of Information Act, and then also what you need to know about the South Carolina Ethics Act. This may be a refresher for some of you guys, so keep it going. All right. So, first up, like I said, I'm from the Municipal Association of South Carolina. We do offer a number of services to our members, so we do represent all 271 cities in South Carolina. One of the services we offer, of course, trainings, like the one we're doing now, but primarily the ones that interest our local cities the most are our local revenue programs. So, we have local revenue services that collect taxes on your behalf, and that comes from the telecom tax, the brokers' insurance brokers' tax, the insurance policy tax, and then also set off debt collection for utility services. Last year, for Batesburg-Leesville, the association collected and remitted $857,094 to your city, and this comes in the form of taxes on insurance policies that are sold here in the community. We do also do advocacy on behalf of our cities, so South Carolina is very unusual, and then every city in the state is a home rule city, meaning you get to make rules and ordinances as you see fit that are best for your community. And we are very passionate about protecting that right as a city and preventing state encroachment on city rights. One of the biggest ones we're doing recently is our short-term rental ordinances. Short-term rentals have been popping up all across the state. It may not be as much of an issue here, but the state government has been eyeing it, taking away local control of a city's ability to regulate short-term rentals, and we are working to protect that. We also offer risk management services. Batesburg-Leesville is a member of the South Carolina Municipal Insurance Risk Fund, so we are your liability insurance provider for you guys as well. We also offer education and training and technical assistance on an as-needed basis. We do offer several publications. If you ever want to take a deep dive into municipal affairs, we have the City Quick Connect Podcast, which is good reading, or, excuse me, good listening if you're ever on the road. We also offer From the Dome to Your Home, which is legislative updates during the legislative season. And then also, each of you should be receiving every month a copy of the Uptown Magazine, which just covers general news items, things of interest that are going on in cities across South Carolina. We are also pleased to offer various grants. The latest ones that we've done is for years, we had a program called the Hometown Economic Development Grant, and these were $25,000 grants that were given to cities to help develop and promote projects. And we felt that that was not achieving the results we were after, so last year, or this year, excuse me, the association rolled out the Impact Fund Grant. These are grants that are up to $100,000 a year for truly impactful projects and unique projects within our cities. If you don't have a project that is truly, truly unique to go after, we also offer the Problem Solver Grant as part of this program, which is a $25,000 grant that solves practical problems at the local level. Maybe you need to update some playground equipment or develop a new downtown master plan. We will fund stuff like that through the Problem Solver Grant Program, and I would encourage y'all to apply each year when those open up. As a member of SMURF, you're also eligible for our liability reduction grant and our law, excuse me, our public works liability reduction grant and our law enforcement liability reduction grant. This is free money. It's a first-come, first-served, and it usually reimburses stuff you buy every year, reimburses body armor. Y'all go for it each year.
With it.
Yeah, okay. I kind of figured y'all would. But again, I, when I was a city manager, my big thing was never leave a dollar on the table, so free money is free money. Get it each year. But that does reimburse equipment that your staff will use on a day-to-day basis. And just to give y'all an idea of our upcoming 2026 schedule, January 20th this year is our Hometown Legislative Action Day in Columbia. Highly encourage everyone to attend, especially this year, it's a good, good time to get to know your legislative delegation. Although nothing is official, we believe that earmarks will be coming back into the state budget this year, and so if you have a big project and need to put a request in, it's a good time to get to know your local, or your elected officials in the State House. Whether or not you believe in earmarks, that's up to you, but I'm of the opinion that if that money's going somewhere regardless, it might as well be going to you. So, you know, don't be afraid to ask. The answer can only be no. The day after Hometown Legislative Action Day, we also will start the 2026 Municipal Elected Officials Institute. Some of you are probably already graduates, but if you're not, I would highly encourage you to sign up for that, and I'm sure Jay would be more than happy to get you signed up. Our annual meeting this year is going to be in Greenville, South Carolina, and that's going to be July 15th through 19th. Good conference, lots of good sessions on the latest developments in cities, award ceremonies for what cities have been up to, also good networking opportunity as elected officials. If you're new on council, as you get out and meet people, you'll quickly find that your problems are not as unique as you may think they are. A lot of cities go through the same problems day-to-day, so meeting people, always a great opportunity. And then lastly, although you guys are on the cusp of what I would consider a small city, I'd call you a medium-sized city personally, but we do have the Small City Summit on August 12th. This is a one-day event that's designed to provide sessions that are of interest to smaller communities across South Carolina. We do also offer various other trainings throughout the year. All right. So, moving on, you've been elected, and now it's time to govern. One of the things I always like to emphasize to our councils is the importance of teamwork. And so, I've chosen here the picture of cogs. All of our cogs have to be turning and moving in the right direction for us to be successful, and the same is very, very true at local government. Whatever happened in election season is now over with, and it's time to get to the nuts and bolts of running a city on a day-to-day basis. And I stress teamwork because it only takes one cog getting out of alignment to really throw something, you know, throw things off balance. And you guys, as local government leaders, you're here to solve the practical problems that face our communities on a day-to-day basis. You're not concerned with the big policy decisions of Washington, D.C. You guys are concerned with how do we make sure the trash is getting picked up on Monday morning? Or how are we getting water to our customers? What can we do to keep our rate increases reasonable? All those kind of things are the questions you have to grapple with that your community faces on a day-to-day basis. So, again, teamwork is key. And part of being a good leader, and this, hopefully this is basic for everybody, but it's always a good refresher, to be a strong leader in your community, one of the best things you can do is to do your homework. Jay and y'all's staff work very hard to prepare your council packets each month. They try to get you as much information as they can so that you guys can make informed decisions. And if you don't feel like you have all the information, then that's when you should go out and be asking questions. You should be coming to council meetings prepared. Nothing should be new when you're viewing it on the agenda. You want to be able to have those discussions about items before you and kind of be ready to go with questions and what answers you're seeking and what discussions you want to have once you get to those meetings. You also want to learn your town's form of government, which we'll go over briefly here, but broadly speaking, Batesburg-Leesville operates under the council manager form of government. You guys are all equal members of the council, the legislative body. The mayor is largely a symbolic figurehead besides every meetings, but at the end of the day, you guys are equal members of this body. And you guys hire a city manager, a town manager, Jay, to run the day-to-day operations of the city. And so, that just kind of goes into knowing your duties as council members. You're the policymakers for your community. You're the big-picture thinkers for how Batesburg-Leesville is going to run. And again, if you try to swerve into duties you're not supposed to be doing, doing things you're not supposed to be doing, can lead us to dysfunction junction. And when I was a city manager, we had an election one time, and bless them, this newly-elected official was very, very enthusiastic about what they wanted to do for the community. And when they got elected, they went out to our departments and started telling department officials what to do. And that was really the role of the city manager. It was not the role of an elected official. And other council members came to me upset because it made them feel bad that they would tell their constituents they couldn't help them or they needed to see the city manager, and then this other council member was going out and giving directions to staff, and they said it made them feel, or looked useless, I guess I should say. So, again, know your duties, don't create friction, keep those cogs spinning. One of the big things you can do as a council member, and I think this can get overlooked, but I always encourage council members to celebrate your community. You guys have a lot of good things going on here. It can be as simple as planting a tree, doing a fire training, litter pickups, concerts in the park. Whatever y'all are doing as a city, I highly encourage you to celebrate it amongst your friends, amongst your constituents, on social media, and showcase the good that your community is doing. It's government. Not everything is going to be perfect all the time, but, you know, we want to celebrate the good, and we want to be able to have those serious discussions when things need our attention. This is a big one as we get further and further into the 21st century. Avoid the social media trap. Again, I emphasize that you guys are first and foremost a team working together for the betterment of the community. Does not mean you're going to agree on everything 100% of the time. That's perfectly fine. But you're here to work together, and if you just bottle it all up and let it seethe inside of you and then go home and write nasty Facebook posts or nasty blog posts about each other, that's not doing anything to solve the practical problems of Batesburg-Leesville. No problem was ever solved with a Facebook post, and I don't think anyone will ever prove me wrong on that statement. So, again, I would encourage you to avoid the social media. Don't get into the weeds of it with constituents. Don't argue with people. You're not going to win. You're just going to make everyone angrier. It's just a bad idea. That doesn't mean don't use social media as a tool to inform, educate people about what's going on, but it's certainly not a platform for arguing. And one other thing we have to worry about moving into the 21st century, Facebook is in general a limited public forum, so if you guys have a city council Facebook page, like, you know, District, District 7, you know, council page or something, you have to be very careful about moderating comments, because as an official representative page of the local government, it is a First Amendment-friendly platform, so you need to be very careful about that.
Are you saying that we would be acting in our office if we had a page like that?
If you're, if you're sharing information about the, if you're running for office, if you're sharing information about the city, those sorts of things, you can be creating a limited public forum, and so if someone gets on there and says, "I think you're doing a really bad job," which hopefully they're not, but that's social media for you, you may not have the right to moderate that comment, because it's, you're moderating it based on the contents of the speech and not what it is.
But that is a definitive official page where you say, "Bob Hall, District 8." But if you have... But if you have a nonprofit or a group page, like growing Batesburg-Leesville, those pages are not considered your official page. They are an informative page.
Yes, sir. That is correct. So it's when you're acting in that official government capacity.
Like saying council member or what they would say.
Speaking as a council member.
It's kind of, and it's an emerging issue too. The, the rules are kind of being developed as we go along. There was a major Supreme Court case just last year that dealt with the issue of someone's private Facebook page becoming a person, a public forum, and they won that it was not a public forum. So it's kind of working its way through the courts. But in general, you want to be careful about limiting free speech on your government pages. And again, all that to say, I just want to, this quote from Vince Lombardi, we use it a lot in the association, but it's, it's very, very true in local government. We highly encourage people to praise in public, talk about the good job you're doing, work as a team, and if you have differences, criticize in private, work it out, have a coffee together. Don't let a disagreement derail the good that you guys are doing as the Batesburg-Leesville Town Council. And it can happen. Again, and this just gets back to our civility initiative. In 2021, the association made civility one of their core missions, to restore civility in local government. And I'm just going to sum it up again, as disagreement happens within government, it's fine, it's inevitable, but we can disagree without being disagreeable. Attack, actually, I would, don't even use the word attack. Disagree based on the ideas. Don't attack the individual presenting those ideas. Again, we're here to find practical solutions to the problems at hand. So, and I'll, I'll send the sheet to, I'll, I'll send these slides to Jay as well if he can distribute them. You know, we encourage listening, we encourage civil disagreement and focusing on the ideas and focusing on the solutions. As part of that, I think one of the, one of the things, one of the roles you may not realize that you've stepped into is, as members of council, you do kind of set the tone for your, for your community. You guys are the local leaders of the community, and, and the tone you set in these meetings does kind of set the tone for the community. So one of the things we recommend, if you guys haven't already, is we do recommend the adoption of the civility pledge, and it's just done by resolution. And at the start of council meetings, many times in addition to the pledge of allegiance and an invocation, just like you guys do now, you can say the civility pledge as well. And it's just, "I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the town." Again, it's just setting that tone that we're here to find solutions to those practical problems of the day-to-day. And again, I say that too because if your council meetings go off the rails because of incivility, the public will eat it up. They will love nothing more than to see wild stuff happen in these council meetings. We don't want that to happen. You don't want 100 people show up to show up, not because they're interested in what you're doing, but they're here to bring their popcorn and see the show. That's what we want of them. And again, just setting that civil tone for our meetings goes a long way. We want people to show up because they're going to see all the good you're doing. We'll run into a brief overview of your form of government. You guys operate under the council-manager form of government. There's three forms of government allowed by state law in South Carolina for cities. You have the council-manager form, which essentially you guys act as the, which is what you are, and you're the legislative body, the policymaking body, and you hire a town manager, okay, who serves as your CEO essentially. There is also the mayor-council form of government, which is often called the strong mayor form of government. And then you have the council form of government, which is kind of a committee form of government. Council holds both the executive power and the policy power. So within South Carolina, the council-manager form is the third most common form of government, or I guess I could also say the least-used form of government. You guys have one mayor and eight council members for nine total, and the council-manager form of government is a product of the early 20th century progressive movement. A hundred and some-odd years ago, local political bosses held all the power. And if you needed something done, you had to go to your local alderman or whoever and probably bribe him with something, with votes or who knows what, to get something done. And reformers at the time said, "We don't want this to happen anymore." And so the city-manager form of government was born, and the idea is that you are taking the politics out of the day-to-day operation of the city. I always use the example, there is no Republican way or Democratic way to pick up a trashcan. It's either getting done or it's not getting done. And your manager is the one to make sure that's happening. You guys are the ones setting the policy, saying that we are going to pick up the trash. The manager is the one for making sure it's actually getting done. Or more broadly, council says, "We're going to plant trees," the manager gets to pick the trash, something like that. It is basically a corporate management-type structure. Again, your manager is the CEO of the city. So within this form of government, the council and mayor are prohibited from law, by law, from interfering with the operation of departments, offices, and agencies under the direction of the manager. That means that you guys should not be going to the police department and telling police officers where they need to set up speed traps or license checks or whatever. What you should be doing is going to the manager and saying, "Hey, I have this concern," and let him address it through the proper channels. And the primary reason for that is it keeps all of you guys on the same page. There shouldn't be any surprises or secrets among you guys. Everyone should be on equal footing since you are all equal members of this body. Council can, is also not responsible for hiring or firing of employees under the manager, and again, may not give orders to employees as well. All of that, excuse me, all of that duty falls to the town manager. Now, what is your role? Within the council-form of government, as I've said, the council has all of the legislative and making, and policymaking authority. So you guys adopt the handbook, you decide what departments we're going to have, you set tax rates, funding levels, you decide how we're going to spend money on the city. You do all these things that do the big-picture thinking for the city and let the details be left to your higher professional manager. Now, you have an elected mayor, but you also elect a mayor pro temp just in case Mr. Bocknight is not here and cannot run a, run a meeting. You have a mayor pro temp to step up to the plate. Within this form of government, it is not optional. You must employ a manager who has selected on qualifications. That's what Jay does. You also are responsible for appointing the town attorney and the municipal judge, which probably is coming up actually.
We'll have all of that on the agenda.
You also have to adopt a balanced annual budget. The South Carolina Constitution requires that every city have a balanced budget each year. You have to make provisions that your finances are audited on an annual basis, and the State Treasurer's Office has really stepped up on that, so I hope you guys are up to date on your audits. He's shaking his head, yes, that's very good. Council gets to decide when you issue debt. You have final appointment authority for all boards, committees, and commissions. So your planning commission, your Board of Zoning Appeals, any other commissions you may have. Again, you establish departments and the functions of those departments by ordinance. If something is going wrong, you have the authority to investigate departments, and you are also responsible for adopting plaques and official maps.
I have one question if I may.
Yes, sir.
Creates departments and positions by ordinance, does that, is passing the budget considered the ordinance that creates a position?
So generally, yes. So that, so it's, this is where it's, the teamwork aspect of it has to fit together so well. You guys fund, basically you guys are funding the positions, and then it's the manager's responsibility to fill those positions. You know, it's, state law is very clear that, you know, the manager is the one responsible for hiring. And in theory, Jay could go out tomorrow and advertise for 100 positions that you guys have not funded. Now, I would hope that you might get together and say, "Gosh, we really didn't say we wanted to do that. Why is he doing that?" And take appropriate action. But yeah, that's, it's, it's that teamwork aspect that he's going to give you the idea of how much staffing is needed, and it's your guys to fund those positions, your guys to fund those positions and his to fill.
But to narrow, narrow my question down, is the, does there need to be a separate ordinance specifying that a specific position is being created?
Yes, sir. I, I think that-
But for a department, yes, but for a position, no.
For, not for an individual position. For a department head, let me rephrase that. For a department head position, yes, where you're creating that new department. Obviously, that department's going to need someone to run it, but you can, within the budget ordinance, say, "We're going to increase the tenants' officers to the tenants' officers." Just by shaking-
So how do you define a department?
A department would be defined by its functions. So you would broadly have, say, a Parks and Recreation Department that would be in charge of parks. You wouldn't have, you wouldn't just say you have one department, the Parks Department, and include water, sewer, and policing and all there. It's going to be based on its primary core function. And so if you're adding a new service or a new function, if that doesn't fit into an existing department, then you may need to look at creating a new department. Like if you don't have recreation programs, for instance, and you want to add it, you could add it to a Parks Department, or you could say, "Recreation is too different from taking care of parks. We're going to create a separate recreation department."
But a separate definitive ordinance would be required to create the term department?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
State law is very clear that departments have to be created by ordinance. Do you have a question? So, the last thing I'll go over in the council-manager form, the mayor, the role of the mayor, as I've said, the mayor in the council-manager form is a member of council. Now, by tradition, the mayor presides at meetings of council. There's nothing in state law that says the mayor has to preside at meetings. However, in Batesburg-Leesville, the mayor presides by ordinance. So that is an assigned duty to the mayor by ordinance. Other than that, the mayor basically acts and votes as a member of council. Robert's Rules of Order says that, you know, the chair of a meeting doesn't vote in South Carolina. The law is very clear that the mayor is a voting member of council, so the mayor votes. So that supersedes Robert's Rules of Order. Now, that's kind of the, the practical matter of it. You know, there's what the law says, there's what the paper says, and then there's reality. And at the end of the day, even though this is a council and you guys are all equals on here, there has to be kind of an understanding that the public does not care that a city manager exists. If something is not working for them, they want the mayor. And even though the mayor has the same powers as you guys, they're more than likely, again, members of the public are going to go to the mayor. And that's where, Mayor, you need to recognize your responsibility to say, "We will look into it and take it back to the city manager." But just from a practical standpoint, again, that title of mayor just carries something.
Should he take it back to the district level as well, so that the district person will report? And vice versa, if it comes to the district?
Yep. Not a bad idea. The, the big thing is if it's something that needs to be taken care of on an, at an administrative level, that it goes back to the town, town manager.
But for communication purposes between the council, would that be?
Yeah. And, and I would encourage, you know, and certainly I'm sure y'all are doing this, but just a culture of no secrets, that again, everyone's getting the same information. If, if, however it is, if, if a member of council requests information or something, just making sure that everyone is getting the same information, and that can be done in a number of ways.
Correspondence directed to the mayor, but dealing with issues that are the purview of the council? Is there a legal obligation that the mayor shares those with council in a timely fashion?
Um, I don't want to say there's, I don't know if there's a legal obligation off the top of my head, but again-
No A.G. opinion.
Not that I'm aware of, but from a practical standpoint, again, of, of being a team and that you guys do have to make decisions as a group, if someone is bringing important information to one member of the body, certainly that information needs to be shared with all members of the body. Because it could impact all your, even though you represent a district or you're mayor, you're basically an at-large councilman, it's still going to impact everybody. And so, you know, again, that's part of, part, and that's why I really stress the teamwork dynamic of, of the count, of, of the council and also the manager. It's, it's the role of making sure that everyone has that same information. So while a legal obligation may not exist, I would say there's a practical matter of-
Practical moral.
Yeah, needs to happen. So, moving on, you guys hire the town manager. Again, holds the role of chief administrative officer, officer, chief executive officer, and they are responsible for fulfilling the policies of council. So again, you guys, you're adopting that budget. It says what we want to do each year. You've got your ordinances set. It's your manager's responsibility for making sure that that is carried out on a day-to-day basis. As I said, state law is very clear that the town manager is the appointing authority for all hired positions and also responsible for setting the salary for those positions. Now again, responsible for setting the salaries, but you guys fund those positions. That's why, again, I stress the teamwork. You know, he can't spend money that you guys don't authorize him to spend, but he also gets to set the salaries. It's part of working together, making sure those numbers and reality match up. Now, the manager can delegate the removal of subordinates to department heads. Again, that's a practical matter. If you have a police chief, that police chief should probably do the most on, most work when it comes to hiring or firing a police officer. Again, just kind of a practical matter. By law, the town manager prepares the budget annually and submits it to council, and after it's been adopted, the, he's responsible for its administration. So again, you guys should be working together when it comes to preparing that, or he'll prepare the draft budget, and then you guys should be working together as a team to finalize that budget to help meet the goals you've set as a council. And then, once the year is up, the manager is responsible for submitting an annual report on finances and the administrative activities of the municipality and other reports from time to time. Very straightforward, all spelled out in state law. All right, and then the last slide here, the manager, and again, those open lines of communication are so important. He should be keeping the council advised of the financial condition and needs of the town so that you guys can make informed decisions about the management and policy of the town. And then, of course, the favorite words of every employee contract ever in the history, the magic words of other duties as assigned. Counsel may ask him to perform other duties as prescribed by law or required by council. And again, I really just want to emphasize, this is the legal structure of your town, the council-manager form of government. But from, again, a teamwork perspective, this, you know, should set the framework, but you guys should all be on the same page when you're moving forward. And I'll give a, a prime example. In 2022, the town in Trall where I was, we changed our form of government from the strong mayor form of government to the council-manager form of government. And it went into effect on July 1st, 2023. And I can tell you, June 30th to July 1st, not a single thing changed. From a practical standpoint, we operated the same as we were before, because even though we were strong mayor, and there were some technical differences between the two, council was informed of what was going on. The mayor included council in the decision-making process, and the administrator handled the day-to-day stuff. Even though the mayor was the chief authority, he did not get into the weeds of whose debris was getting picked up, or, you know, that, you know, that limb fell on my property and you guys need to come pick it up, or whatever. He kept hands off, kept the council informed, let the administrator. So, all that to say, there's three forms of government allowed, but as long as you're working as a team, all of them will work. There's not one that's better than the other.
You must have been a representative of Smith.
Yes, sir, I did. Mr. Smith taught me well.
Yes, he was a man.
He taught me the best advice I ever had. When things are going good, it's the council's doing. When things are going bad, you're, it's the manager's fault. Best advice I ever got.
I had the pleasure of being with you two times.
We're going to do a quick overview of, of effective meetings. Just to reiterate what I've said earlier, come prepared to discuss the meetings, be prepared, and that's- And that's, that's again where I'm saying, make sure everybody gets the same information. Study the packet ahead of time. You've been elected to make informed decisions for the community, and those voters have put their trust in you, and you need to respect that trust and be prepared to make those decisions. Very basic, arrive on time. One time, I had a planning commission public hearing, and we were missing one commissioner for a quorum, and we had about 50 people there that were angry. It was on a rezoning matter. And about 6:17 rolled around, and the commissioner just came strolling in and looked at everyone and said, "Oh, y'all waiting on me to get started?" Yeah, we, we kind of were. And you can imagine, those people were already angry. Now they feel disrespected on top of it. That meeting didn't go well, so arriving on time, very straightforward. Please put away silence yourself. You're here to have a business meeting. If the public is here, they've taken their time to be with you guys. You guys have been elected to make those decisions and run the town on the, run the town. It's just a matter of respect, not, you know, be buried in your cellphone while you're following around. Avoid side conversations. Again, it's just like putting your cellphone away, very basic. This is a favorite of mine, body language is very important. I've been told I have an expressive face. I do not have a good poker face. It's something I have to work on from time to time. And we had public, we had a public hearing one time, and a citizen came up, and they had some very unusual things to say about local government, which were not really relevant to what we're being discussed. And the town clerk was very kind and texted me and told me to fix my face. You just have to be cognizant of how you appear to the public. Again, it's just showing a sign of respect that you're engaged with them from a body language, first of all. Again, you have your meetings. There's five types of meetings. There's regular meetings, special meetings, public hearings, executive sessions, and emergency meetings. Remember, whenever there's five of you gathered, so a majority of council members, that is a meeting and the public must be allowed to attend. Now, we always say, it's a public meeting. The public gets to be here, but the public does not get to run the meeting. They can take your photo, they can livestream it, but they do not get to run the council meeting. Council meetings, at the end of the day, are business meetings where you're conducting the public's business.
Quick question. If we were to do tours of town facilities, hypothetically, we had a turkey restaurant or something, how do you conduct something like that where you're mobile?
So the way I handled it is, I would notice it, because presumably, you're going to discuss this town facility while you're there. So you're meeting that requirement for meeting. The way I handled it, because we had a park project one time that got behind schedule and council wanted to meet at the park with the contractors and that sort of thing. So what we did in that circumstance is, we set a notice that said, we are going to meet here at a set time, and then we will be departing here to go to wherever we're going. And this is the schedule we're going to try to keep. So that way, we let the public know that, you know, they can come, they can leave from here with us, maybe not ride on the same bus, but they can follow us or whatever they want to do. And they can basically tour that facility with us. But it is still technically a meeting, and they do need to be allowed to attend that. Now, if it's a sensitive or secure area, say you need to tour the police department and you don't need, you know, you've got to be sensitive to operations of the police department, you can do it as, you know, just a couple members of council at a time going through, again, making sure they get the same information. If you're doing a group tour of some facility, I would set a meeting place as here and then travel as a group from here. And I believe that would be the requirement. And again, just to reiterate one more time, you guys, as a body, are the ultimate decider for all the decisions that come out of here. Mr. Mayor, you have a, you have an important job of running the meetings, but remember, this is composed of nine independent councils, or eight independent council members and yourself. And you're here to run it. Yes, ma'am?
If five of us or seven of us were in a place, a party, or whatever?
A Christmas party rule.
Or just, I'm grilling out at my house and invite everybody, or whatever. Is that considered?
So, I always say, in that case, you need to be sensitive to how that's going to appear to the public. There's really two requirements to have a meeting. One is that there's a quorum gathered, but then you also have to be discussing business. So you can verge from an accidental meeting or an accidental quorum into a meeting real fast if you're not careful. What I would do in that case is, I had what I called the Non Freedom of Information Act, Freedom of Information Act posting. And say, we had our staff Christmas party, and we want council to be there. What we did is, we had council serve food to all our staff, and so the whole council was there. It's not really a public meeting, you know, it's a staff Christmas party. And so I would put a notice on the bulletin board and on our website, and it would say, "Town in Traw having staff Christmas party. A quorum of council members will be present. However, no business will be discussed, no votes will be taken." So I didn't have to do that, because there's no meeting actually happening, but I'm trying to be as transparent as possible. So, yes, accidental forums can happen, especially in small communities. Just make sure no business is being discussed, and again, just try to avoid it as much as possible.
So actually, a quorum does not require a vote? You can't have a tour in which you specify that no votes will be taken, no action?
I guess you could, but again, if you're taking a tour of a town-owned facility, I certainly think the perception would be that you're going to be discussing it while you're there. And so the key is not just a vote, it's the discussion of town business as well. And that's kind of the key distinction, it's discussion and vote.
Question. So if there were to be a vote, if a vote was necessary, then it should come back to the regular council?
Absolutely. I wouldn't, I would not set an agenda item that we're going to meet at some facility and maybe vote while we're there. I, I would keep it to fact-finding and bring a report back to council. That's, and that's just, again, transparency. So, getting back to this, we do set an agenda. A written agenda is required for all meetings under Freedom of Information Act. I'm going to speed through this, because you guys do a great job with all this. But the purpose of the agenda is that it provides a guide, a guide for the issues to be discussed. You're not just coming in here and saying, ah, what do you guys feel like discussing tonight? Maybe we should talk about recreation or sewer projects, or, ah, what do you feel like? It sets a guide, a step-by-step guide for how you're going to discuss business, and it ensures transparency for the public. Requires a 24-hour notice for items to be added. Again, I'm sure your staff here do a wonderful job making sure all that's going on. Now, local code here in Batesburg-Leesville, the agenda is prepared by the town manager. However, during a council meeting, under your ordinances, a member may request a public meeting of council, at a public meeting of council, that an item be placed on the agenda of a future meeting of council. If approved by a majority vote, the requested item shall be added to the agenda of a future meeting. And you guys have a space on your agendas for that each meeting. I think that's a fantastic way to do that. You guys know this, but your, the order of your agenda is set by your ordinances. This is what all your agendas should look like, and it's Code Section 135. I don't feel the need to read all that to you guys. It's, again, y'all, y'all have this set up very, very well. Agendas can be amended, although I don't recommend it. There's two circumstances where this can be done. If, if something is being added to the agenda for information only, and there's no vote happening, and the public will have an opportunity to comment on it at a later date on public comments or something, two-thirds of the members present and voting can vote to amend an agenda and add something to it. I can see where this may happen from time to time. Say, some new information came to light the morning of your council meeting, and it's important that this information be presented to council in a timely manner. If it's for information only and you're not going to vote on it, maybe amending the agenda wouldn't be a bad thing. Again, I try to avoid it at all costs, but it is possible.
So you're saying that council does not have a mechanism to, let's say, four council members, say that, you know, next meeting, we really need to have this on the agenda? There's no mechanism to do that? The agenda is actually controlled by the town manager?
You do have another, I believe it's, you do have another mechanism within your code as well for four council members to add something?
Four council members can call a meeting.
Yes, four, that's what it is, four council members can call.
But it doesn't say that we can amend the agenda on a regular scheduled meeting or that we can add an item to the regular schedule.
No, so you can't, you cannot add an item the day of the meeting?
No, no, but I'm saying, two weeks before the meeting, all right? Business license, ordinance revision, it's not currently on the agenda. Four council members say, we think it's important enough to add. There's no mechanism to do that currently. But an ordinance could be addressed to control the agenda. Not control, but to give council a mechanism for a group of council members to add an item to the agenda.
So that would be something y'all would need to, so right now, the way I understand your code is you have two ways to do that. One is, at a regular meeting, a council member says, I would motion to add this item to the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Or you have four members can get together and call a special meeting. And that would be, you would get to put an item on the agenda through that way as well. So those are the two ways to do it. As far as I know, within your code, and I did just kind of do a brief overview-
But state law?
Oh, within state law? There's no mechanism within state law, that's a law.
And there's no prohibition against the order?
It's, it's a local rule that you guys would have to decide.
It's a local rule to be adopted.
So, so in Traw, for instance, we had, when we switched to council manager form of government at first, we had no mechanism whatsoever for anyone but the town manager to put items on the agenda. And understandably, our council members were like, what if we disagree with you on something? And sure, that, that could happen. So we did amend our code to say that three council members, we had seven, so you guys have nine, that's why it's four. But we, we said that three council members could get together and get a special-called meeting with an item on the agenda. Or if, or if they, it could either be a special-called meeting or it could be added to a regular agenda.
Or, okay. But we need to amend our ordinance.
But that's, that's a local rule that you guys would have to come up with. So going back to this, if there is, this is a very, very rare thing. I have not seen this really since COVID. If there's some kind of absolute emergency going on, and you just cannot wait 24 hours to publish an agenda and have a meeting, a two-thirds vote of council can pass an ordinance in one reading under, and amend the agenda, excuse me? Sorry, let me go back up. Two-thirds vote of council can amend the agenda if you're going to take a final vote on something, like an emergency ordinance. There has to be some kind of time-sensitive emergency going on that would allow you to do this. Again, COVID was the last time we really saw widespread use of this. The only other circumstance I can think of recently is, there was a city that had a high-profile kind of last-minute political candidate come to town, and council needed to appropriate money like ASAP to pay for security for this event. And so that was an emergency ordinance. But it, it very rarely happens. Hurricanes, storms, things of that nature. Just for y'all's own information, there are certain things that require ordinances. An ordinance is basically a law made by the council. Adopted ordinances have to be amended by ordinances. And the things under state law that require an ordinance or annexation, adopting codes, establishing or abolishing departments, adopting the budget, selling or leasing land, establishing fines or penalties, setting your rules of procedure, setting the salary of council, conducting elections, zoning issues, or borrowing money. If it's not on that list or somewhere else in state law, it can be done in resolution, which is basically just saying, this is what we want as a body. Only requires one vote, and it can be in written form or oral form. A lot of times, if you're applying for grants or things like that, you'll have to pass a resolution saying that, if we're awarded this grant, council will commit funding to the future.
FOIA requirements for retaining resolutions?
They should be, I believe resolutions have to be kept indefinitely.
Numbered, indexed, or?
They do not have to be codified, but, but I, they do need to be retained. There's a retention schedule published by Department of Archives of History that I can send you. Public engagement. Public comments, you guys do allow them at your meetings. You get to set your own rules for public comments. Public comments, there's nothing in state law that requires council meetings to have them. It's good practice to have them. The public, I believe, has the right to be heard. You guys have great rules for it. Public comments are not a question-and-answer session, therefore, council to receive information or feedback. If you let them turn into question-and-answer sessions, that's when your meetings can go off the rails real quick, and people will suddenly start asking a whole lot of questions and get a lot of surprises. It's just a bad, bad thing. And I believe you guys require people to sign up for public comments before you do it and only speak on items on the agenda. That's a good way to do it. Keeps it relevant. Executive session, there are only five reasons that council can meet in a non-public manner. So that would be to discuss personnel matters, contractual, real estate, or receive legal advice, security matters, investigative matters, say, police or criminal investigation into a town department. That can be done in the executive session, or economic development matters. And it is worth noting that if you're meeting to discuss economic development matters or contractual matters, and you're negotiating it, if those contracts or that economic development project comes to fruition, those documents related to that do become public at the end. But within executive session, you know, you shouldn't be keeping minutes. It should be discussion only, and those conversations should stay private. But if actual contracts or things come out of that, those can become public documents down the line. Executive session, worth noting that you do have to have a reason for entering into executive session. It is not enough to just say personnel matters. You're supposed to give as much detail as you can without compromising the issue. So say you wanted to give Jay a big raise. You would say, we're going into executive session to discuss the town manager, employment of the town, salary of the town manager, for instance. And that was a case that came out of North Augusta, where North Augusta went into executive, the council of North Augusta went into executive session to discuss personnel matters. Somebody sued the city, a guy named Donahue, I guess. And basically, the state Supreme Court said, it's too vague. You got to give a little bit more detail as to why you're going into executive session. So again, you shouldn't be keeping minutes in executive session. You cannot vote in executive session, and you should not be taking informal polls in executive session. So if we're in executive session right now, you shouldn't be saying, hey, how's everyone else going to vote when we come out of here? That's, that's the same thing as taking a vote. You should not be doing that. Now, if you're going to take action, or you should really just always do this, and you guys do it, but if you're going to take action coming out of executive session, you can vote on the matters discussed, but you have to leave space on the agenda for that vote. This was a case that came out of Mount Pleasant, where the council went into like a two- or three-hour executive session, and everyone left. And they voted when they came out of it, and the city got sued. And the guy basically said, I didn't know they were going to vote, and I didn't want to stick around for three hours to wait for them to come out. So the Supreme Court said, you need to let people know that you might vote when you come out of the executive session. Basics of risk management, moving on from meetings. This is very basic. We live in a very litigious society these days, as you probably know. It's important to know that as long as you, as a public official, are acting within the course and scope of your capacity, the Torque Claims Act, the South Carolina Torque Claims Act, will protect you from personal liability in state court. If you act outside of the scope of your duties- If you act outside of the scope of your duties, it will not protect you. So this uses the example, if you spread false information about why an employee was fired, that is outside the scope of your duties and you can be liable for that. If you hop in a police car, which hopefully Jay would not let you do that, but let's say you hop in a police car and say, I'm going to go pull someone over because I'm a council member, I can do it. That is outside the scope of your duties and I'm afraid you will be responsible when you wreck that car.
False or any information?
So, in this case specifically, it would be false information. I would consult with your town attorney before releasing any information at all. But certainly, false information is outside the scope.
Of course, how do you determine what is false? What is false?
Yeah, that's, that's why I take the position that I don't say anything. So, and just in that same vein, through SMURF, you do have public officials' liability insurance. Hopefully, it hasn't happened, but if it happens and you guys get sued from an unhappy citizen or whoever because they claim you did something wrong, we do provide insurance coverage if, if someone is alleging that you've made an error in your procedure. So I say, I say these two slides to say, if you're newly elected, don't feel like there's, there's no hope if you get sued or something like that, you know? As long as you're acting within the scope and course of your duties, there are mechanisms in place to protect you. If you're just hanging out there and personally liable for everything, I don't know why anyone would ever be a council member. There's just too much unknowns in government. Getting into the Freedom of Information Act a little bit, I won't go into a whole lot of detail on this because again, you guys do a fantastic job already with covering the Freedom of Information Act. But the basics of it are open meetings. Anytime you guys are meeting, the public has to be allowed to attend unless you're in executive session. The agendas have to be published at least 24 hours ahead of time. They have to be posted on your website. They have to be sent to local media. Again, you guys do all that and do a wonderful job. Records have to be available to the public. And again, you just want to avoid those accidental meetings. Prime example, in Chara, I had a group text with our council. It was to tell them when we had ribbon cuttings or to remind them that we had meetings coming up. Every now and then, one of them might send, hey, what do you think about this? That is a meeting that you have just created. So again, we want to avoid those accidental meetings because we have violated your freedom of information.
And just to touch on that, same thing with emails. We're sending out information to councilors, a whole back and forth exchange.
I think in general, the best way to do it is if you have information that you feel needs to go to the whole body of council, I believe, this is my opinion, you guys may do it a little differently, but it would be the best course of action to send it to Jay and then allow Jay to send it to the whole council. And that way, you're not, again, accidentally creating a meeting through email. Because again, that can happen. This is called the Green Book. It's the public official's guide to compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. It's published by the South Carolina Press Association. If you Google that, it will come up. It's a fantastic book. It covers all the ins and outs of FOIA in a very easy-to-digest way. So highly recommend that. And last section we'll get into here, ethics. I told you I got, I tried to keep it to an hour, hour and 15 minutes. The South Carolina Ethics Act is found in Title VIII and Chapter 13, covers ethics, government accountability, and campaign reform. All of you are elected officials. I'm sure all of you are familiar with the South Carolina Ethics Commission. You probably had to file some statements here and there about who's donating or what you're up to. You're not done with the Ethics Commission now that you've been elected. Public, and Jay's not, Jay has to deal with it too. Public officials have to submit an annual statement of economic interest. It has to be filed by March 30th of each year by noon for the prior year. It's filed online and you do have to cover, you know, type, amount of income from the government and there's other information that'll ask you for. Very easy to fill out, but very critical that you do that each year. And we will send out reminders, so don't worry. If you fail to file the SEI report, there's an initial penalty of $100. They're going to send you a certified letter saying you have to fill it out. And after you get that letter, it's $10 per day for 10 more days, so another 100 bucks. And then after 10 days, if you continue to not fill it out, you will be fined $100 a day until you reach a max of $5,000. After that, I don't know what happens. Let's not, let's not become a slide on my next presentation. Non-disclosure, if you fail to disclose, you may be given a chance to correct the omission. If you fail to disclose something, there could be a $2,000 maximum fine. Again, accidents happen, but do your best. This is a big one for council members, conflicts of interest. It is important that if you have a conflict of interest, you have to refrain from voting or participating in that potential conflict. And if you willfully know you have a conflict of interest and participate and especially vote on it anyway, you can be fined, you can be required to forfeit your office. It's just good practice, don't do it. South Carolina law is very clear about when a conflict of interest exists. We'll get into that in just a second. But if you have a conflict of interest, you have to prepare a written statement describing the conflict or the potential conflict, and it must be filed as part of the official meeting minutes. A lot of places use our kind of this model recusal statement. This is the one we used in Chara. I've seen several other cities as well. You guys probably have your own.
No, we use the same.
Steve?
Probably.
So, so a conflict of interest is very, again, very clearly defined. You cannot use your official office to gain an economic interest for yourself, a family member, an individual associate, or a business that you are associated with. And you cannot use your office to influence a decision in which you have an economic An economic interest is an interest distinct from that of the general public in purchase, sale, lease, contract option, or other transaction involving property or services in which a public official, public member, or public employee may gain an economic benefit of $50 or more. There is an exemption to this. It's called the large class benefit. Now, you guys are your local elected leaders, you have a vested interest in making this town a better place to live for everybody. Generally, when that happens, your property values go up. So say you have some kind of proposal come before you, some kind of master plan or something, and if you finish the master plan, your property values are going to trip. Well, obviously, you're getting an economic benefit from the implementation of that master plan, but the key distinction is, so is everybody else. Your benefit is not any different than what everyone else in the community is getting. And this comes out of, I believe it was Georgetown, but there was a council member who owned property along the riverfront. And the city was looking at redeveloping the riverfront and she was afraid that if she voted on it, it would be a conflict of interest. And so it went to the Ethics Commission. And the Ethics Commission said, yes, you own property, yes, you will benefit from this redevelopment, but your benefit is going to be the same as all the other property owners on the riverfront. So you're not unique in gaining that benefit. Lastly, please don't take bribes. I'm going to leave it at that for this. Just, just don't take bribes. It's illegal, it is illegal for people to offer you bribes. It's illegal to accept bribes. Just don't do it. Please keep trust in local government alive. If people still trust local government, let's keep it that way. That's all I'm going to say on that, but if you're interested, that's the relevant law for my opinion. So to summarize, if you have a conflict of interest or you believe you have a conflict of interest, it's best to recuse yourself. Again, you have to do this in writing at the meeting and you have to avoid participation. My personal recommendation, again, just for maximum transparency, if you have a conflict of interest, I would recuse myself and then leave the room. That's how our council members did it. They would go out until the matter was finished being discussed and voted on and then they would come back in. Again, just kind of maximum transparency. If you're really unsure, because even though the examples I use are very straightforward, they're not always straightforward. The Ethics Commission will issue an informal opinion. If you give them a call, they will help you through the process and you can present it as a hypothetical, you know, so you can, you know, rest easy. And again, at the end of the day, if you just don't know, you can recuse yourself. Just do it in writing. And then the last thing I'll say about ethics and expenses, you as a council member can receive payment for actual expenses incurred in the performance of your duties. Meaning that, and that's just a fancy way to say, you can't have an expense account for you as a council member and you cannot get a per diem as a council member. You can only be reimbursed for actual expenses related to your duties. Reason for that is if you get a per diem and you don't spend it all and you don't return it, then suddenly you've gotten a salary raise, basically, is how the Ethics Commission does it. Again, get reimbursed, you know, use the credit card, get the points, and then get reimbursed when you get back to town. Guys, that is a very, very, very quick newly elected official orientation. I hope it was a little bit interesting for you guys, hope you maybe learned something.
I have one recommendation that you add to it.
Yes, sir.
If your retirement plan is playing the lottery, do not do it. The AG's opinion 2001, Charlie Tonda, the state constitution prohibits officials from gambling. And the AG has ruled that playing the lottery is gambling.
I do notaries, I didn't realize, council.
Notaries, I came on that, but notaries, but it also applies to all public officials according to the US Constitution. So if you're buying a lottery ticket, buy it for your wife.
I'm glad I didn't win that billion-dollar jackpot when I was city manager.
I would, hey, if I won the $438 million, I would simply resign.
I'm with you on that one. Sorry, guys. I'd make a big donation to the city and then I'd say, you know, sorry.
But you know, if somebody would like to unseat you, all they have to do is take a picture of you buying a lottery ticket. And it's an automatic, it's an automatic loss of office.
Like I said, guys, that is a very, very brief crash course. I'm happy to discuss any of this with you. My job is to provide technical advice, general guidance on how all this works. So that's what I'm here for. Jay has my contact information. It's also on the website as well, my cell phone number and my email address.
24 hours a day, seven days a week.
At least five days a week. I'll, I'll talk to y'all on my drive home, so I have someone to keep me company. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
You know, y'all have a beautiful town here.
Where do you live, Ron?
I'm up in Spark.
Have a safe drive.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you for coming and giving us all this information.
I may have a card, too. And I know you have another speaker.
If you want a quick bathroom break while we're giving ourselves some.
All right. We're going to take a five-minute bathroom break or 10-minute bathroom break.
From one side and out the other side, it causes this ball to mutate, which means it turns around and around. And every rotation that that mutating disc makes turns the dial on the top of the water meter, which gives you a reading of the amount of water consumed in the meter. Rotation turns dial. What happens over time with any mechanical part is that it simply starts slowing down because it gets impeded with trash or debris or calcification within the meter, other elements that will slow it down. And AWWA will suggest that a positive displacement meter in this part of our nation degrades as much as a half a percent per year. Every year loses about a half a percent of registration. That problem was solved when solid state meters were invented a decade or so ago. And the ones that we're proposing for this project are both solid state meters. There are two kinds. One is called ultrasonic and the other is called magnetic resonance. So a magnetic resonance meter, like its name, uses a magnetic field to measure the amount of water that flows through it. And it measures it like 4,000 times a minute. It's unbelievable how much registration is improved in magnetic resonance meters. The ultrasonic meters uses sound waves to do the same thing, but on a larger meter set, so to speak. So with that, that's really some of the benefits and the drivers. And I hope you like this. By workshop, we came and brought you what we think are about the 20 most commonly asked questions for any council who sits and entertains the idea to move to advanced metering infrastructure to kind of give you, spur you into conversation. So let's move into some of those questions. Oh, Jay asked us to also point out that this type of a project will, has the ability to allow your citizens to be better demand managers of their own water through portals and those types of graphics that can be made available on your website or by the city itself. And what that would really do is, we see this example a lot. Jay, there's no way my water bill fills that high. Well, hold on a second, Mrs. Smith. Hope there's not a Mrs. Smith in here. Hold on a second, Mrs. Smith. Let's pull up your water meter readings in the month of April. Well, I have here before me the entire 30 days, and I see that on the 14th and 15th, you had a flow of water 10,000 gallons. Ah, forgot, we were filling up the pool that day. You're exactly right. So it gives the citizens information to understand why there's an abnormality in their bill if you have a portal, or if your city at least has a portal and they can pull up your water meter account, and they can look at your profile of usage for 30 days, and they can tell you the amount of water used in a given hour on a given day. It really is very, very, very beneficial.
When I worked at Duke Energy for 25 years, we went to the AMI for the version of electric meters, and the utility commission allowed that to be an energy conservation device. So many people being smart with how they use electricity.
True.
They became more energy conscious, let's say that.
True.
This case should become more water conscious.
You will become much more water conscious. And if the city should choose, under advisement of council, if you should choose at some point to adopt more of what we call a conservation rate schedule, that means your higher users, your commercial users, may be charged a different rate than some of your smaller residential users that may be on fixed incomes. These systems allow you to actually reduce the amount of expenditure that a small, single individual who flushes the toilet once a day, so to speak, while it actually has more revenue projection based on its commercial user. And even so much with a portal type environment, you can say to your citizens, we're in a drought. So those on the odd numbered street signs can water on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday this week, and even number waters on Tuesdays and Thursdays only. And it gives you a chance to actually detect when water is being used. So you might send, you know, a message saying, hey, we're trying to impose some drought restrictions, and we're going to ask you politely just to water on these days. We've noticed you've been watering every day. You can do that if you'd like, and I know I'm on TV and probably not making somebody very happy. So maybe we should move on to our questions. This project, as we mentioned when we were here a couple of weeks ago, one of the council members, sir, I believe it was you, that asked, would the price still be good? The answer is still yes. It's still a $2.7 million project with a 20-year savings of 16 million, just a little bit over 16 million dollars. That 16 million dollars represents both the operational savings and the revenue enhancements based on that 5% accuracy improvement. Let me pause on that for a moment. What that means is if your water meters today are at a minimum of 5% degraded, we go back to the AWWA rule of a half a percent per year, we multiply that by the average or median age of your water meters today, they're very likely degraded somewhere between 8 and 11%. But in a very conservative format for your council meeting today, we are showing the amount of lost revenue over a 20-year period, assuming that they were only 5% degraded. I will say one more thing. When they come out of the box, they're only 99% accurate, the type of meters you have. That would assume they've only degraded 4% over almost 20 years. Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask you, how long does it take for these type of digital to degrade?
I believe that they never will.
Okay.
Now, let me back that up. That doesn't mean they'll last forever. Here is the constraining.
Next question, the life of them.
The life is 20 years, but it has very little to do with their ability to measure water. It has everything to do with the battery that communicates the signal out of the pit, and it eventually gets that water meter read back to City Hall. When the battery fails, the meter has to be changed. And you're like, well, wait a minute, Philip. You said the accuracy would be probably, what, forever, you said? Well, for a very long time. The battery is hermetically sealed from the factory inside the water meter itself. You cannot break into the meter and change the battery without destroying the water meter. The manufacturers all do this, and they tell me the same thing. Well, if the battery was externally mounted, water and debris would corrode it and it wouldn't last as long. Philip has an opinion that the reason that it's not changeable is you would never sell another water meter.
Right.
I stand before you today to tell you that I believe, but 20 years, it's still pretty good, right?
Yeah.
Still pretty good. But if we could change the battery, it may be a very long time before we would have this conversation again.
Yeah.
And they're all like that. One company a couple of years ago put a solar, put a solar panel on the top of the water meter and fed the battery solar so that it would continue to recharge the meter, and they went out of business. Imagine that. I started to tell them, if you look anywhere around South Carolina, in two days, there's so much dirt on top of that water meter, that solar panel is going to be so dirty, it's never going to work anyway.
Sure.
But I still thought it was a good idea. Let's get to our questions.
Sure.
Okay. What is AMI? AMI simply is advanced metering infrastructure. And what that means is we can take a reading from a water meter, and we can propagate it, send it out of the pit to a tower location that collects information from multiple water meters and sends it back through a TCP IP Transmission Control Protocol, Internet Protocol, or through a cellphone signal, collecting that information and sending it back to a billing system within the City Hall.
That's colloquial terms, a smart meter.
It's a smart meter. And it is capable of doing many smart things. So that's really what AMI is. Let's go to our next question. So why is the town of Batesburg-Leesville moving towards smart metering and upgrading smart meter?
Cars. The ones we got are too old and they're going to fail, and we can't buy new ones because they're obsolete, probably.
You need a job? It's pretty good. That's really what it is. Because the ones you have in the ground now are at the point where they're beyond their useful and efficient life. They are not registering the water that's going through them, and there's something grossly unfair about a family moving in next door to any one of you with a new home, and the city coming and putting a new tap in, a new water meter, and that water meter registering 100% of the water through it, and everybody else in the neighborhoods registering 80%. Or 85, or 90, or 95. But something under the registration. So this allows fairness across the entire city, and it allows you to pay only for the water that you're using.
Excuse me, if I may.
Yes, sir.
These meters have a life of 20 years.
Yes.
Theoretically, over the years, we should have been replacing our meters on an annual basis, a percentage. I'll bring to mind police cars as an example. But if you take this projection of cost savings out to 25 years, drops off cliff because we're going to have to replace 3,500 probably in 25 years, five or 6,000 meters at one time. So your cost projections are going to savings or in a dive.
So this project at two-
So can we take it out 25 years and let's really look at what long-term it's going to save our community?
Maybe you might want to consider this approach. I love your idea, but I think I would consider the approach of the meters will have a battery life of 20 years, but be careful. The last five years of that, they call prorated warranty.
You should refer to it.
They will begin paying you some percentage, like 15 years and a day, you're probably going to get 99% of the value of that meter refunded by the manufacturer themselves in the event that that battery fails, but not the entire. So starting in a year, about year 14 or 15, we can help the city show the utility services are as follows. Let's measure the amount of battery life in each one of the remaining meters. Let's interpolate out when that battery life will fail based on the first 14 years of usage that we've seen. Now we understand that in year 17, it's likely that that meter is going to fail. This project, again, at 2.7 million, produces 16 million in cash flow or 11 million over and above what it costs to fund it. Let's start earmarking in early 13 or 14 years down the road, some amount of money off of the net positive of this project, so that in year 16, 17, and 18, we're predicting and changing those meters that are failing. And by the time we get to year 20, we've changed 30% of them, and in year 20, we still have all this net positive cash flow to begin changing the remaining 3,000 or by how much ever the city grows.
So does your 16 million actually factor that in currently?
You could take that 16 million and go buy a bunch of McDonald's food. We would never know.
I still have-
It is in-
My question does not change.
No. It's going to be the responsibility of the city to be a good steward of those extra monies.
The prorating of the battery life, are we able to see that-
Yes.
-on a daily basis, the battery life, or do y'all have to come out and-
No, you're able to see that yourself. We don't have to show you that.
At all times, through the data.
In fact, that question is so good, you won't need us for anything after it's over. You will be self-sufficient.
Until the replacement.
Until the replacement. Now, if you ever need us to show you again how to maximize that system, how do I see remaining battery life? How do I set up business review services, and this is critically important, so that I can run a report every single month, and I can compare my top 100 users to my top 100 users last November and to the November before then? And in December, what are my top 100 users doing this December compared to how they were performing last December or the one before? The reason for that is we very often see a house become a hair salon. You can't believe how often we see this. And it has a 5/8 3/4 meter, and then they put seven stations inside of it that are using water all the time, and they need a 1-inch or a 2-inch meter? Well, that 1-inch or 2-inch meter is a different base charge for the city, for the town. And you're losing revenue if you're not watching your top 100 every single month. We don't want to charge you a dollar for that, but we can show Andrew exactly how to do that. I think he would be very interested in it. He can run his own reports.
Comparatively, to replace the meters we have now, and I've watched what it takes to replace those, how easy is it to replace these meters?
Same.
Time-wise for our maintenance people.
15, 20 minutes.
Big deal.
It's still the same 5/8 3/4 inches, one on one side, one on the other, and it removes out the same weight, it's the same size, it's the same lay length, you don't have to do any piping modifications for it. The only thing that I would tell you is there will probably be some lines that are brittle, depending how old they are. And we will define for the city, based on their request, our own responsibility of how far we need to dig back to find some solid metal or dig forward. We typically design that as two feet upstream or downstream of the meter. We'll take responsibility. If it breaks, we've got a tractor trailer full of this stuff, we'll fix it. But we're not going to walk off. We're not going to, we're not going to walk off. We'll call Andrew and say, we might have to dig all the way to your house, 15 more feet. We'll settle up for that. But we're not going to just walk off and leave it unplugged. We handle that.
Head out, please.
It would be if it's outside of our contract. And I would not encourage you to have us price it in to have to dig 15 feet on every one, because you may use it once, and you would pay us too much money for that. Let's do it on an isolated basis.
Okay. From the town standpoint, what are we looking at, Jay, if we come, say it's my house, and you know, we have all this old stuff, and we find that their meter won't hook, and we do have to go further, are we going to put that cost to the property owner? Like it is, you know, basically now, but-
In my opinion, and I'm saying this without talking to anybody else, I think if we, as the town, are swapping out that meter, and we are essentially doing that damage, and we have to go five feet, 10 feet into their yard, we would be the ones responsible for that repair.
And the town would call.
Because, you know, it's betting was the one initiating that we are. So I think that would be the town's responsibility.
That would be my thoughts, but I didn't know.
That would be what I would, I would look at that.
It is very much an outlier, but we're a very transparent company. I can promise you this. At 3,400 meters, if that happened once or twice, no one in this room would probably ever know. We would just go do it. But if it were 3,400 times, we would sit down and regroup with the town and say, this is a consistent issue. We decided that we would be liable two feet before and two feet after. This is the 12th one in a row. We need to pause and reflect and determine what to do.
Wait until where I let it be asked.
Okay. Well, that really covers a bit about what it is, but yes, ma'am.
What she was saying, my community, our homes are so old, and that, you know, we realized the timeframe when, you know, I already got a problem with that, when the lines were run. But the meter, I think my meter was replaced in 1985 because we had a, we had a snowstorm. The temperature dropped so low. So I was going to ask, what happens with catastrophic temperature drops? Will it affect this machine, this mechanism? Because if so, that's what happened when you had, in the 80s, you had to replace, oh, like 89 meters in the ground at that time. Now, the homes that these lines are run to are extremely old. They're over 75 years of age plus. So then it could-
Great question.
It could present a problem when you talk about the lines from the main line back into the property. So Jay, we got to look at that?
Yeah, and that's, that's going to be part of what, you know, how long has it hurt a lot?
Well, we have never worked in a town or a city with new lines. I'm not trying to be funny, I promise you, I promise you.
Subdivision is coming in. All right, what happens with the subdivisions coming in to our new homes? They would be, by the time you implement this procedure, it would be that all 1990s-
Well, you have a five, but you have a five-year build-out on these projects. They probably will be new, the majority of them will probably be new installations. Actually, we would be putting this meter in.
Yeah.
I mean, if we start this, if we start this project now, I would say we should prioritize new meters allocated to those subdivisions now as part of the project. This meter does not, the full system does not have to be incorporated before you start to have meters installed. They can be still manually read.
All of these meters can still be manually read, even without the communications network. They can't.
You know, from my standpoint, our priorities would be harbor watch and any new installations in town would be the priority line, but that's someone else's decision.
Two great questions that I'm entertaining, and so much to unpack here, but I'll be right back with you on yours. Ma'am, you wouldn't believe, one of the drivers in the north, where it's much colder than it is here, we do a lot of work in the north, these meters will actually tell you the temperature of the water in the line. And the cities oftentimes, in certain climates where we work in, will send freeze notices out, and they'll ask their citizens to barely turn on their sink because we've determined that the temperature in the line is subject to freezing pipes in your house. It's such a great customer service benefit of mine. It's so great to be able to do that. Some other cities where it's consistently cold like that want a water meter that they can actually turn off. And the reason they love turning off some of these meters, and I'll pick on the north for a moment because we're not in the north, and there's a big mass exodus of residents. And where they're moving? They're moving to South Carolina. I told everybody it's full, but they don't listen to me. But what happens is when someone moves out of their home, then you have squatters that come in, and they rip all the copper piping out, and the water flows everywhere, and it freezes, and it flows into the street and freezes, and then you have an accident where somebody gets injured, and it's liabilities back on the town in that case. We want to be able to determine temperature in the line, constant flow of water in the line, water breaks and things of that nature. These meters do all of these things, and I guess, to use Mike's point, that's why they call them smart meters. So it's remarkable. I think that I was going to come back to your question, sir, and you're, why am I losing it at this point? Please remind me, I'm so sorry. I had two questions. One was about the water freezing, and one was-
I think it was related to certain areas, starting with those areas.
Oh, yes.
It was primates about-
So typically, across America, one thing that's consistent is most utilities started out with pencil and paper and a little book, a little notebook, and they call it routes and books. Well, we have four books, and within each book, there's seven routes, and we're still reading according to that today because that's the way we've always done it. We will never interrupt a reading cycle. That creates mayhem like you can't imagine, trying to marry one old water, the reading off this meter and the reading off the new meter. So we wait through that reading cycle, and then we begin installing the meter. And when we install a meter, we're capturing the old read from the old meter, and we're capturing the new meet from the, new read from the new meter. We're integrating that for you so that your billing department doesn't have to do it, and those two bills together become next month's water bill. That's typically the process. So it wouldn't be by necessarily, it could be by subdivision, but it's probably about historically, the way you've read and billed your meters, is how we would go through an installation process. Thank you for reminding me of that, Jay.
Go to your point.
Will my water, will my water bill increase because of the new water meter?
Yes.
I'm going to make a prediction that Andrew or someone, maybe one of you, gets a call. My water meter, my water bill's gone up. And you call Andrew, and Andrew says, we haven't gotten to their meter yet. It has never not happened in 30 years of me doing this. We hadn't gotten to your meter yet. And then it's dead silence on the phone. If your water meter is registering 60% of the water flowing through it now, and you maintain exactly your same usage patterns, your bill will go up, but your rate won't go up. It's not a rate increase. It's just based on how much water you use.
So the answer would be, we've been getting a lot of green water.
Yes.
And say thank you, and now we're not.
Well said. Hey, you can have a swig of that.
I will not tell this city, because I get in trouble, but we engaged a city once, and when we're walking along doing our surveys, we noticed that the football fields, practice fields, were the greenest things we had ever seen. Not the playfield, the practice field.
It's happened to be in Texas.
It was in Texas. It was in Texas. And what we discovered was that the school had bypassed the water meter to the irrigation line for their practice fields. We alerted that, alerted that to the local government. They sat down with the administration, and they said, your bill's going to go up, but you're lucky that we're not going to backcharge you for the seven years that we could. Wow. Now we should probably move to the next question. How does the installation process work? Do I need to be home? You do not need to be home. No citizen needs to be home. The only time we ask people to be home is, again, going back into the north where the water meters, believe it or not, are mounted inside basements. And it's the most difficult process in the world not to change the meter, just to get someone to agree to be home. So in this case, we will go park in front, there'll be vehicles with signs, there'll be uniforms, they'll have our name, there'll be t-shirts, collared shirts, collared shirts will be supervisors, t-shirts and jackets, hats, you'll see everyone. And we'll go to the water meter pit, and we'll open it up. Someone will knock on the door and wait for a moment. And if there's no answer to the door being knocked on or the doorbell, they go and observe the water meter itself. If the water meter is not registering water, the dial's not turning, and there's no one who answered the door, in 15 minutes, we've changed that water meter. And then we go to the side of the house, and we turn the spigot on, anywhere we can find access to it. That's in the event that one single grain of sand got in the meter during the change. We want to flush it out so it doesn't clog your shower head, and this man right here is not getting a mad call about someone with a shower head. This also happened once. We did everything I said. And we went and checked, knocked on the door, no one answered. Went to the water meter pit, the water's not running. Started changing the meter, and a very angry lady came out and said, what are you doing? I have no water. Well, we told her the first two things we did. And she said, I'm washing my dog. I was in the soap cycle. I went to rinse him, and there's no water. Well, give us five more minutes. The bad thing is, she was the mayor's wife. But we do our very best to alert. We even go so far as to allow the city to be able to publish in advance on the website or a water meter bill exactly where our schedule is and where we will be next week, and you can follow us along as we, as we continue to update that schedule. I miss anything on that?
What's happening?
Okay. How long does it take? 15, 20 minutes?
15.
15 or 20 minutes. What should I prepare for? Really? The only thing we would ask is don't park your car over top of your water meter pit. It's harder to change that way. Just give us access to the meter. If it's behind a fence, most of them are not going to be, and you have a big mean dog, we might ask you to restrain the animal, allow us access to your backyard if it's back there, and any access to the meter that may be prohibited, we would ask the homeowner to help us with that. I don't see it being a big issue. Cost to the customer? No. It's a cost, the entire project funded by the town and recovered by the amount of revenue that it generates off the degradation of the meter. What happens to my old meter? This is the good news for the city, for the town. We will get a trash container, and every meter that we pull out, they don't belong to GRP Webber. They belong to the town. And brass has a really high residual value, about $26,000 per, we estimate. And that's basically taking the average weight of a 5/8 3/4 residential meter, multiplying by the number you have, looking at the brass value. We can even find the salvage company for you if you like.
That'd be great.
They love to come get these meters. I don't know how much they make on them, but it's more than 26,000. But that's better than you throwing them away. Data is all encrypted. It's, all these are licensed spectrum within the census product, and it's safer than a microwave, to tell you the truth, in terms of its signal strength. It's a three-watt signal strength that comes out of the ground, propagates to a device, antenna on a tower. That antenna on the tower sends information back to the billing department on default four times a day. So every six hours, it reads these meters. I don't know that you need to know what your water meter's doing every six hours, but that's by default. So it gives you a near real-time feeling of how much water is being consumed, and that goes back to how you present this data to your end users, to your constituents. Yes, sir?
Quick question, and this kind of goes to Councilman Paul's question about 25-year life. Because we had talked about that previously, that if you read it more frequently, the battery would degrade quicker, that was part of the warranty issue. Could it go the other way, where if you stretched it to every nine hours or 12 hours, would it be possible?
I believe that it would, because I know when I don't use my cellphone as much, the battery lasts longer. And I'm not trying to be funny about that.
No, that's common.
I'm just, common sense. The least you read it, the more it protects its battery usage, right? We mentioned some of those water meters that you can actually close and open from a remote position. They don't have nearly the battery life, five years left, because it takes a lot of battery power to actuate that valve, which is inside that water meter. And so you give up something when you gain another benefit. Jay, honestly, if you read them once a day or twice a day, I can't imagine that that wouldn't prolong the actual battery life of that water meter.
If it is a passive state device, then it must be interrogated to transmit. You're saying the meter needs to be interrogated before it transmits?
It does.
Okay.
Now-
Then therefore, then therefore, the majority of the power used is gonna be in the transmission. So automatically, if you read twice a day, the battery life would be extended versus reading it every hour on the hour.
I would never read it on the hour every hour.
No, but I'm saying.
But you're right. You're a hundred percent right. But if you get big industry that moves here and they take a lot of water and they take a lot of water between, say, twelve and two in the afternoon? You could treat them more in a demand setting like an electrical company does where you impose demand charges. And you may want to read those meters more often to generate the extra revenue. But it'd be well worth it replacing that battery in that meter or that meter. Yes, you can. Based on commercial residential. Yes. Again, using my. They're smart meters.
I, yeah, I'm a country boy, I like to deer hunt. I give you a real good example.
Go ahead.
I use these cell cameras to, you know, deer are really moving a lot right now. My brother put out some corn the other day and my battery's gone like that because of all the deer hunting. My camera's sending pictures all day long, at least in the morning to evening. Kills my battery.
Yes, sir.
Does turning the valve while keeping record and does that shorten the battery? I mean, you've mentioned about turning, does that?
These valves don't turn, we did not propose a valve capable of being turned off, what we call actuated remotely on this project. These are non, you cannot actually remotely, remotely open and close the valves on these. They are.
How do you put it off a non-cable? We would still have to manually turn it off.
You would have to manually?
You have a valve in front of the meter that you turn off and lock.
I had that question, does it be turned off remotely? And my reason for that, when you're talking about somebody's out of town and we notice, you know, the personnel in the office notice, oh, well, they've used all this water. They can't remotely turn it off. Do they have to wait on the customer? Would we have to wait for the customer to call back and say, "Please go turn it off" or would we?
Well, companies that make things, like Bullen makes one, that a customer can buy and put on their, on their own home. That will detect the leak and if it's unusual, it'll cut the water off. And now, if somebody's got an issue and they're worried about it, all the town needs to do is just tell them, if you, if you think you may have a problem, then you can purchase this and have it put on yourself.
Certainly can.
And not make the town pay for that.
Right.
What's your thoughts?
Well, I'm just giving a personal story. My mother has a home in her hometown of Wrightson City. They have a, they called her to let her know that, hey, we've had a high water usage, they detected the leak. They sent a crew over, turned off the valve, they tried to knock on the door, nobody was home. But, so within a day, they had notified us and shut off the leak which saved who knows how many thousands of gallons of usage. And so I would imagine we would do the same thing. The portal that we're talking about, the resident would get that notification as well. That is, is huge. But we know, not everybody's gonna sign up for the portal, not everybody's gonna use it, not everybody wants that. But we would get those notifications as well. And after a certain timeframe, we would have some type, some type of policy that we would reach out.
After so many gallons have hit, we would just.
If that twenty-four hours of leakage or state of use, we would, we would reach out and try to make that. Because that is, that is one of the big selling points of this project.
I would think doing it on the gallons that have passed through more than the time and the, that's just throwing that out there.
Committing to this technology does not lock you into this particular meter for the next twenty years. This is a workshop and we're very transparent. I would suggest to you that once this, this project is a couple of years into its running and you see the benefits and you're getting a lot of great feedback from your citizens. This administration and council could make a decision that, you know, we have thirteen percent of our utility that's consistently late pay, no pay. We're always going out and driving a truck, using a T wrench, cutting off water. And then we're going back out after they've come and paid and we're opening that valve back up. Remember, thirteen percent of thirty-four hundred meters is not a lot. Now, these meters that you can actually ping from right here to turn off the water and turn it back on, they're about twice as expensive as a normal meter. But you don't need them everywhere, right? So if you decided you wanted to be scalable in this project, a couple of, two or three years down the road, you wanted to buy four hundred of them and simply place them in areas where it's been historically every month for the last ten years, late pay, no pay. You could now actuate the meter off and on at a very limited number of locations based on historical late pay, no pay. You can easily do that. It's as simple as changing the meter. The moment the first drop of water flows through that meter, it commissions, talks to its signal, it's ready to go. And if that became an issue where you are no longer using that meter because someone else moved into that home and they're paying the bill regularly? Pull that out, put it somewhere else. Yes, they're so flexible and so scalable.
Another question I have is where do you place the towers to receive the?
We like to use water tanks. We've, because they're tall. We like seventy to ninety feet, ninety feet's better. The higher we can get, the fewer collection devices we need. We have earmarked four, four locations, three of which are on existing assets that you own. One of which we believe we'll have to put a monopole tower up to read, I think, the readings that are out closer to the lake that you have expanded to on what Andrew and I like to call the lollipop, which is running a water meter out, then it has a big circle of users. Kind of looks like a lollipop from the sky, right?
You plan to cover our entire district?
Yes.
For future expansion?
Yes.
So, I don't know if propagation study has, has really been able to study it all, but I think based off of our conversations, we've got the existing towers in town that we would probably be, I'm making the assumption we'd be able to partner with joint municipal on their new tower that we are pulling off of, which would get that middle area. And then we would have some type of pole that would be a service in the system too. So I think that two to three in town would cover the town, the new tank and then the pole.
And that really helps control costs because, again, more infrastructure adds more cost. I remember years ago, we did the city of Hendersonville and had fourteen towers. Because if you've ever been to Hendersonville, it's very mountainous. And so the mountains block the signal and you have to have so many more collection devices. It's still a great project for them, but considerably more expensive. These are great questions. Well, AMI affect my plumbing? No, doesn't change anything in pressure in the line. In fact, I will tell you, if you didn't tell anyone, there's a really good chance they would never know we were there. I mean, I'm in this business, they changed my meter, I never knew. And it's the same, at my house, same exact meter that you're gonna be having in your community. You just don't know. How will financing take place? Currently, the best use of monies for these projects is private sector funding made available through the banking system of the world. The Truist and Sun State and Bank of America. And there are many providers of what we refer to as a TELP funding. T E L P stands for tax exempt lease purchase. It is an operating lease and not a debt construct. So according to the AG's opinion, and this is not necessarily Moody's opinion, but the AG's opinion is it works within your operating budget. It is not a bonded project. It does not prohibit you from bonding other activities. It is paid for out of your operating budget and it is an operating lease. It is structured at a very low cost of acquisition. I would look for certain terms within it and we're not the bank. I want to make sure that there's no penalty for prepayment. Because if this project, you decide to pay it off earlier, you will have net positive dollars and you could do so before the end of its twenty years. And then every one of those dollars that's produced could be banked to do that meter replacement that the gentleman over here was speaking of. So I know that the administration has spoken to South State, did I say that right? To Truist and to Bank of America. And I know that they're working with Parker Poe, a great agency. They recently funded a project for us down in Bamberg County. And they will be handling your financing. We don't make a penny off the financing. Excuse me? Parker Poe. Your, your attorney, your attorney is handling that to secure the best rate for the city for funding this project. It'll probably be somewhere in the four percent rate. It's still not bad money.
They, they normally, banks normally limit us to twelve years.
The ones we've talked to have been saying twenty years instead of, they, they're okay with that. We were discussing ten or twenty as options, but they didn't have any problems. South State, Bank of America and the Truist were all working.
Twenty years?
Twenty years, yes.
With no prepaid, I mean, no prepaid.
I would definitely look for no prepaid penalty.
If I was to back that, I'd give twenty years and then pay off.
Oh, it stands for tax exempt lease purchase, T E L P. It is a construct used across our nation for projects like this, as well as energy projects and air conditioning and lighting and other things. School districts use them. Mr. Wilson acts like a country boy. He is on his second or third term at Anderson School District. Third term. He is also, he is also a trustee for Anderson University.
I'd like the gentleman for the municipal association to come to our school board, give that sample.
Comes in here talking about deer hunting like he's not sat in your positions for many years. So we're giving. What else do we have?
I was gonna say, Phil, something to highlight that I like is that we can structure the, we can structure the financial agreement as such that the savings generated pay for the project year over year.
Oh, fully, year over year. So that the amount of money you're actually spending in each and every year to retire this financing obligation will be less than the enhancement to the revenue that the town receives. So that there's no out-of-pocket monies coming from reserves or the need to pass new rate increases. The project pays for itself. Thank you, Eric. Well, well, they wouldn't be to us.
Well.
But to the bank. Then less than what you're achieving. Yes. What do I do if I have questions or concerns? Call Jay. Then Jay's gonna call, he's gonna call one of us.
Then I call Andrew.
I, I will tell you, I'm proud to say this, the gentleman, he's, he's not with us this evening. There will be a dedicated project manager. And this gentleman's name is Lance Hens. He is a mechanical engineer. He has his master's degree in business. He is a licensed professional engineer, holding his PE stamp here in South Carolina. And he lives about fifteen minutes from right here.
He's a former Marine too.
And he's a former Marine.
And he's from where?
He, Lake.
He lives near Lake Murray. Between here and Lake Murray.
What, you know, what's that restaurant, Catfish Johnny's, something down there?
He lives right near that.
There's a marina there, I'm not eating there. Fisherman's Wharf, Charles Fisherman's Wharf. It's two restaurants.
So, most people like to know that the person where the buck stops, the actual project manager, not me. The person who watches the work go in the ground, he is as local to you as any project manager will have. He is right here. I'm really happy to tell you that. Next steps or? Yes, Lance is the person and he is more than capable. He is working, we just finished Star Ival Water earlier this year. We are finishing the Camden project right now.
Did y'all do West Columbia?
We did not do West Columbia. We were late. We went and visited and they had already hired someone. But we, we're finishing Camden right now. This will be our next and Lance is very well-versed in this product because the product that we proposed here is the same one that was chosen by the city of Camden. He's very familiar with it. Did we go too fast? We know you sat through an hour of the municipal association. You didn't want another hour of AMI.
Yes.
But we thank you for allowing us to come here. We really do. Do you have questions for us?
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
And I like the digital meters.
Yes.
It reminds me, I have an excellent thought and it's kind of the same thing compared to shock.
Yes.
I mean, there really is a large difference in the way things work.
Yes, sir.
So this system will allow us to designate a meter as being a commercial versus a.
Yes, it will.
An industrial residence.
Yes.
One of my pet, I won't say peeves, but the little old lady down on the corner of Oak. And Howard is paying the same price for water that McDonald's pays. And McDonald makes money because they sell it as a Coke or whatever. We really need to look at differentiating between residential and commercial rates. If, if we're gonna grow and be a bigger town, we need to act that way. And most, most towns treat commercial and residential water separately, different rates.
So happy you said that. Part of our work is we are a rate consultant. We're not proposing that for you here. I could freely show you rates from other towns with similar sizes of profiles of usage on commercial and residential. You could adopt one. I would just ask that you consider that water is not free. It's not free. If you are west of the Mississippi, water is almost as precious as natural gas or oil. And cities sit around and they talk about fourteen and eighteen percent rate increases on an annual basis. And people east of the Mississippi are like, "What? We haven't had a rate increase in seven years." Don't be that counsel.
And also they said their consumption's too.
Yes. Because water is not free. It costs money to pump it, to treat it. It costs money that you lose it in the ground when it's not being registered. And to go prolong periods of time, even though this project will save you from having astronomical rate increases that will burden your citizens. There's a way to set rate increases to the McDonald's who are commercial users of water to protect the little Mrs. Smith who lives by herself on a fixed income.
I'd say it's not, it's not isolated to cities. Duke Energy's a multi-billion dollar company. When I worked in Anderson, the Anderson district, we used to find hundreds of meters that were operating, were not even in our billing system. And lots of them were mis-supplied rates. And we used to say, if we could just get a commission off of those, we could top it. But it was hundreds. And now tell them how many happened in Charlotte and Greenville and this and that. It's, it's common occurrence.
Not a lot of horror stories. I would, I would tell you if I had any. The only one that I would say to you perhaps is this. There will be one or two meters out there that are shut down, locked. There's a piece of debris inside the measuring chamber and it's not registering any water. And that person's been going on a tiny little water bill or a base rate. That person may call you. Because they're not gonna pay for water that they're using. But you can say the same thing. We're not gonna go back and charge you. But this is going, these systems are gonna tell you when that happens. And you have abnormally high usage, abnormally low usage. And now you have real time and you make those decisions before they can compound and it becomes a problem for the end user. And that's why they're great.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. And happy Thanksgiving to you and your community.
Thank you very much. About everything that we have on our, on our agenda for the night, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. In a second. A motion in a second. And a vow.
Objection, we will.
Since we can't vote in a war session. So we're gonna borrow the money. Which is okay.